You're doing all right, Dan.
Okay, whenever you're right.
Larry, you'll do the invocation. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to this Monday, July 1st, public meeting of Board of Garrett County Commissioners. Got a nice, healthy crowd here today, and welcome everybody. Excuse me, if everybody would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and then Commissioner Titchell will lead us in the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, bow with me for a word of prayer, please. Precious loving heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you today thanking you for the day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the crowd that's here today, and, Lord, we just ask that you be with each and every one of us, and everything that we say and do here today would be pleasing to you. Lord, we do all this in thy precious holy name. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Knoll, any additions or changes to the public meeting agenda?
There are none.
Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the public meeting agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Second.
Second.
Agenda approved by mutual consent. Everybody got a copy of the minutes in advance of the meeting? Are there any concerns, additions, corrections to minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion of the second, minutes approved by mutual consent. First item we have on the agenda is a presentation by Dwayne Yoder, who was the Chair of the Garrett County Diversity and Inclusion Committee, to give an update on that, and, Dwayne, I'll welcome you up.
Well, thank you, Paul. So I ended up chairing the Garrett County Diversity and Inclusion Committee. So I've been, I'm the person that they picked to do this oral report. But I want to start by first thanking the Commissioners for the appointment and for their support. I also want to particularly thank Kevin and Carol for their logistical support. And there's no way I could not mention the support that Sierra Whitfield and Sarah Meyer supported, both in terms of the content of the report and the format of the report. There are a lot of other people who were supporting, but I'm not going to attempt to start going through that list. They're listed in the report. The report is available electronically. It involves, we have a couple of hard copies floating around here somewhere, if you need a hard copy at this point as well. But it can be accessed readily in terms of, you know, the Internet and the county webpage, so if you're interested. The other thing I want to do, you know, it was a, this was a good committee, and I would just say to the Commissioners, you picked the right people, other than maybe the Chairperson. And I'm going to start by introducing the committee members who are here and the people who aren't able to be here. Vaian Bell, who is our Vice Chair, is here. Scott Hollingsworth, who is our Secretary, documented all our proceedings. He's not here, but he represented the Appalachian Parent Association. Dr. Daphne Gooding, yeah, Daphne's here. She represented the Garrett County NAACP. John Hummel, I don't think is here, he was the Public Schools. Dr. Shane Pittman, community member. Shelley Manier from Garrett College. And Gloria, oh, yeah, sure, Gloria Salazar from the community. And let me just say one thing about the committee. We, the committee, Chuck, you should have waved. Chuck also from, also a community member, First United Bank, by the way. Sorry, Chuck. But this committee really worked. Worked, and so the content, the format, the putting together of the report itself was the result of this committee's hands-on work. And, you know, I can only say thank you to the members of the committee, and I just want to express appreciation for the real, genuine, hard work that they put in. So let me just talk a little bit about the background. Do I, do I control this, or do you?
No, I do.
Okay, good, thank you. I'll just tell you when I'm done. Good. And I'm, okay, I'm watch your clock here, too. So the charge to the committee came from a resolution by the Commissioner, and they talked about advising the Board of Commissioners on the challenges and on policies and practices and initiatives that enhance community welcoming and inclusion. So that was the charge. And, back up. I knew I should be, I should, I did notes, and I'm not following them to begin with. But the other person on the committee that was appointed initially and then left after he got an important job was Commissioner Savage. He was an active participant on our committee initially, and then was elected, and I think he began thinking that it didn't make sense for him to advise himself. So, you know, he ended up on this board. But Commissioner Savage was an active member, and I, again, I should be following my notes a little bit, all right? The other thing I wanted to say as a beginning, sort of a background, is that we, the committee, really believe that our community, our world, is becoming increasingly diverse. And this is important, and it's important to our well-being of the community and of the county to recognize this and take advantage of that. We believe that not only is important to our economic growth, but we think it's important for the enrichment that comes with diverse culture and mixing of different persons and backgrounds. So that was kind of a beginning of, you know, where we are. The other thing I want to note is that our work is not being done in isolation. There are other initiatives in the community right now that are occurring that we think this report will support. And there are such things as the Chamber of Marketing Campaign, a welcoming marketing campaign, the College of Diversity and Inclusion Strategic Plan, the Bethel Restoration, the Bethel Church Restoration and Mountain Lake Park. The, the School District has a Diversity and Inclusion Advisory Committee. So there are other initiatives occurring in the community that are, you know, important, and this report, I think, just integrates with those and intersects with those. Kevin, can you move to the next? So, let me talk about the methodology just a little bit. The first thing I want to say is that the one thing we wanted to do as a committee is to hear directly from as many residents and visitors in the community as we can. And so our work plan that emerged from our consideration revolved around that. The other thing I want to say is that we organized our, I guess, our approach around what we were calling, at the time, to call some of our marginalized community groups in terms of what the information we're gathering. We took two basic approaches. One is that we divined and distributed a survey across the community that went to both visitors and residents. We also held public listening sessions, both general public listening sessions and sessions that were targeted to specific groups that we thought would have an interest in our work. There were almost, we have, I think there were 16 different listening sessions. There were almost 200 individuals that participated in those listening sessions. Some of them were general, in most of our towns, accident, Grantsville, Grandville, Kissimmee, or Oakland. And some of them were targeted to groups like students of color at Garrett College or individuals with mental and physical disabilities, parents of people who, and young people in our school system, school administrators. These were in the groups that we had targeted, and we had standard questions with them. The survey really ranged from strongly agree to strongly disagree, and it covered a wide range of topics. The report that we have issued, the report that you can access on the Internet, and a couple of hard copies that Vaian has, documents these findings. And you can find both the original documentation and the comments. The comments, though, just for your information, were redacted so that we could not identify individual organizations from those comments. But the report itself documents those statistics. So the other thing here is that I, in terms of our report, in the way we're presenting the report, we, there are three main focus areas. Living and living in Garrett County, working in Garrett County, and raising a family in Garrett County. So the information and our findings build around those things. So the findings. The findings are from both the survey and the listening session. The quantitative side of the report is from the survey. However, I would only say that from our listening sessions and from the written comments on the survey, there were, the real-life experiences of people came to life. Sometimes they were emotional, sometimes they were real-life experiences that people talked about. And they're powerful, and I, you know, want to highlight those as being a part of the report because I think they just shed another side to the data, the hard data that we collected. So the findings, one first finding is that marginalized groups reported feeling less positive about their living experiences in Garrett County. And this was reflected in both the written and the comments, and the oral comments as well with the survey. The second finding is that marginalized groups reported feeling less accepted, unwelcome, and excluded. And I just might note that if you look at the report, the big disparity, the biggest disparity among the marginalized groups were the, were people from the LGBTQ community. And just as a, I guess, a highlight that that was probably where the biggest discrepancy was between what we call the general public and the targeted group. The survey, the third finding is that the survey, over half, from the survey, over half of the LGBTQ and the people of color reported having experienced discrimination. That's over 50% of both those groups. I think the individuals with physical and mental disabilities, it was around 44%. But there was a marked difference between the general public and what these groups were that we gathered information from. Persons from the listening sessions described personal experiences in which they feared for their safety. And sometimes this ranged from visiting local establishments to experiences of some of our young people in the school system. So those were the basic findings that we tried to organize around what we, the information is that we gathered. There are several ways that we could organize this, but this was basically the approach. I should say, and I'll say it at the end again, if you look at the report, it's still clear that people believe Garrett County is a great place to live and be and want to visit. And in fact, when you look at the documentation, you know, the majority of people, even with the marginalized groups, you see a lot of that information. But it is also clear that the marginalized individual had a distinct, different experience from the general public. The recommendations. As a first step, adopt a welcoming statement and conduct a campaign that sends a message that all are welcome to live and visit Garrett County. And we think this can serve as a model for organizations, employers, towns, other groups in the county. We know that integrating and welcoming persons with diverse backgrounds and experiences are important to our economy and to our social future and to our, and to growth. And there are two examples that I want to use, just to kind of highlight this. And we heard this, we heard from, we heard of nine black individuals, professionals, who had been living in Garrett County and who moved out of the county because of hostility, I think was the description, or fear. The other, sort of the other flip side to a question like that is that we talked to a group of, to a therapeutic work camp for families with children, interracial, adopted children who were interracial and who were part of the LGBTQ2 community that were wanting to come to Garrett County with about 400, this was across the eastern United States, 400 individuals for a week, who are coming this summer because they were reassured that they would be welcome and that there wouldn't be incidents built around their visits. And I highlight that because in both those cases, it's examples of how important this can be to the county's economy and its growth and its social growth. Second recommendation is that we establish, that the county establish a county-level position responsible to lead diversity and inclusion initiatives. And particularly the focus on a strategic plan, an overarching strategic plan that can talk about goals, progress, and track and report progress. A third recommendation is that we encourage training events on the importance of diversity and inclusion, and that we utilize groups like Garrett College or the Chamber to do this. A fourth recommendation is that we encourage the public school system to support marginalized students, such as with the Diversity Advisory Group and Mental Health Professionals, for example. We heard from school administrators that there are resources, and that the school system does have resources, and there's an issue of how they can be made to work and be made accessible and are viewed as something that's accessible by students who are encountering issues. We also would encourage the county to support events and activities that promote inclusion. And there were, just I can't avoid not saying this because it was such a warm feeling. We heard from people who were involved with the Crowe and the Grantville Elementary Schools, where they had different programs interacting with students from South Africa, and the students were just warm, and it was a warm feeling whenever we heard the comments. And similarly, the college, some of the international students at the college were doing programs in our school system that were really, you know, heartwarming, I guess is the best way of putting it. So those are the recommendations. I'm going to get through this in my 15 minutes, right? So Garrett County's a wonderful place, I've already talked about that. But there are some differences, and there are things that we, I think we need to address. And addressing these diversity and inclusion recommendations, I think are important, one, to achieving the goal that the Commissioners stated when they formed the committee, the goal being commit to building a welcoming environment throughout the county that is free from harassment, discrimination, and disparity. So that's a goal that we think this report addresses. It's important to our economy and to its growth, and we think that the inclusion, or the report, will support the county's Economic Development Strategic Plan, which talks about the goal of equity inclusion that is needed in order to shore up the workforce. And that's specific, that's terminology, I think, that you used in your strategic plan. And it's an important ingredient to just the richness that comes out of the diversity. So those are the recommendations, that's kind of the conclusion. I did want to, well, let me just say one other thing. I have the phone, I'm up here with the mic, so I can say this without too much of a threat. If you would oblige me to make one personal comment here.
Please do.
I think we should do it because it's the right thing to do. It's just the right thing to do. Quite all right. That wasn't planned, I'm sorry. So I, I'm sure I screwed up a lot of things here in this conference, and, you know, we got committee members here. If any committee member feels compelled to say something, please do so. I don't know how you want to handle questions, is that now or the end, or?
Well, I think before we do that, I do want to yield, because there were a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort into this. So if there are any other committee members present that would like to speak, please feel free to do so. Yes, ma'am?
One, Gloria Salazar, one recommendation that Dwayne did not withdraw was that we are recommending you continue the committee.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Gloria. I knew they would.
It was on there, it was on the screen.
The recommendation, for those who didn't hear it and on the internet, is that the committee be made, continued, be made permanent, and that that committee perhaps look a little more diverse than the current committee.
Any other committee members want to make any statements?
The only thing I wanted to add is not in terms of the report, but in terms of the timeliness of this report. I mean, we just had two first events in Garrett County, the Pride Festival and June Day. So I mean, you know, really in terms of intersecting with what we're saying and the positive side of that, I think it's worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Daphne?
I wanted to say that, yeah, I think we need to think in terms of continuing this and actually collecting data, you know, at specific intervals, and let's see if some things have gotten better or maybe not, so we know, you know, what the effectiveness of our efforts are. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Any other committee members? Before we go, and I do think we'll take questions, I'd ask you to stay up here in case there are questions directly related to the committee work, and then you can answer those. But I know I speak on behalf of the Commission. I want to thank everybody who participated in this. The report is thorough. It is posted right now, you can find it at the Garrett County Government website. I do think it can be a good resource, the amount of investment that you guys have made in time and collecting information for the School Board's Inclusion Committee or anything college is doing, or anybody, anything anybody's doing in this. Some of the work's already been done, so there's no need to reinvent the wheel. You can, you can take it, you can use it, the information's there, and it's available. So it was a lot of, a lot of time and effort, and we acknowledge that, thank you for that. And you can find the report and encourage to go look at it and look at the findings. So having said that, let's go ahead and open the floor to questions specific to this topic before we move on to the rest of the agenda. Yes, sir?
No, I just wanted to thank the committee for its work. I mean, in some quarters, I mean, diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts are called some of us woke agenda. This is common sense, this is a common sense agenda for economic development, for retaining talent and skill in the county and not losing people, for attracting new businesses, new employers. And it makes common sense, so I wanted to thank the committee for its work.
Anyone else? Yes?
I'll just, a question, I do have a question, but I'll start off with this. My time at PNC Bank, I was the first ever Vice President of their very first ever Diversity and Inclusion Council. And to be ongoing, you had this request, right? We had to prove that we were a financially viable council for the organization. So the first two years, we focused on only our employees and our employees' feelings about diversity and inclusion. And what we determined by measuring their engagement through diversity and inclusion efforts is that we improved our annual revenues via only employee referrals by $125 annually. Now, I'll tell you, that was only 3.125%, because that was on a $4 billion a year company. But to be very clear about the real economic value of this, it can be proven. But you can't prove it until you set a baseline and track it, and that's why it's important that you keep it going. So there's my statement, I'll throw that out there. I didn't see any of you at Pride. And so now what I want to know is, what are you guys going to do with this? That's my question to each of you. You're the leaders in this county, you're the Chair of this county, right? What's your involvement going to be, and how are we going to see you show up in a way that makes a difference? Because leadership is what's going to drive this. So I'd like to hear from each of you honestly, what are you going to do with this? Other than make the commission happen and gather this initial data?
I can tell you, hold on, one of the main issues you brought up was...
And why wouldn't you say it? That's the other thing.
One of the main issues you brought up was mental health, and I can assure you, we are, as a board and a county, we are reaching out and investing in the mental health care. And, you know, things will come with that soon, in economic development in the world on that. So, yeah, just look forward to some news for that. That's, that's what I'm willing to do.
Well, I just got to say that I've looked the report over, and it's such a thorough report. It's amazing to me that you all gathered so much information. And I'll say right now, I'm not going to commit to hiring somebody at this point, but as far as continuing the committee, that'll be up to the committee themselves. We'll support it, at least I will. But the funding of another position in the county right now is questionable for me, so that's where I'm at.
Well, now, I will say, I don't think we're in a position right now to look at each one of those and say, yeah, we're going to do this, 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 and this, or not do that. We have to take that under advisement, look at it, talk about it. I don't think there's anything in that request that's unreasonable. I agree with Commissioner Titchell's statement that finances might preclude some of those things, but it may not, you know, we just have to take a look at it. I wasn't there because I was out of town at a family function, so that's the answer to that question that you asked. I, I've said this 100 times, and I'll say it 100 more. I'll meet with anybody, anywhere, anytime, and have a discussion about anything. It's my pledge to the people that elected me, it's my pledge to you sitting there right now and anyone else in the room. I've met with the committee, or at least with Dwayne, more than once to talk about this. I'm actively engaged in the School Board with what's going on there. I've had meetings at the college with what's taking place there and what they're working on, and I'll meet with anyone about anything. So my participation is in, you know, who needs me to be involved, who reaches out. I don't know everything that's going on, but if you invite me to come and speak or to have a meeting, I'll be there. We may disagree on things, but I'll be there, and I'm certainly open to have whatever discussion in those settings that you would like to have. So I hope that answers your question that you asked.
Partially. I mean, I, actually, no, it doesn't. I'm going to say this. Actions that you take are different from the leadership stand and how you represent yourself locally in the community. And I'm just, I'm going to throw it out there because I'm kind of, I've been here long enough, and I've heard it long enough, and participated in all of this. The one thing that I heard about this Commissioner group was, and things being fed by this Commissioner group, was that it was not supportive of some of these efforts. And if that's the case, and this is just what people are talking about on the street, right? If that's the case, what you guys need to understand is that your representation as a body, or your reputation as a body, rather, is that you're not wholly in on supporting these initiatives. That's the talk, right? I'd like to see you prove it through your leadership, that that's... I'd like to see you prove it through your leadership, that that's not the case. It's an ask of you. Prove it through your leadership that that's not the case, but just know that what people are talking about, the words that are coming out of your mouth, whether it's in social settings or public settings, is not coming across as being fully supportive of diversity and inclusion efforts. And that's just holistically across the board, all efforts. So that's our reputation. We do something with it, we do something about it, or we don't. I think at this point, you have the information you need, so it's 100% in your report.
Yes, ma'am?
Oh, it's me again with the mean mouth. But the truth is, if we really want to make this happen, we have to make some investments into what, what we want to see happen. That's the way the world works.
Ma'am, yes?
I do have a few words. Bear with me, I'm trying to stuff in a 10-minute speech and then I'm hearing that. All right, I'd like to thank the commissioners today, I'd also like to thank the Diversity and Inclusion Committee for all their hard work. As many of you know, I'm thankful and humbled to be president of Garrett County and W C branch, chairperson of Garrett County Pride Incorporated, and Western Maryland Advisory Council Member to the Maryland Commission on Social Rights. As an 18-year resident of Garrett County, with many generations of family ties here, I love our mountain community. I am also a steadfast American. As such, I, along with my fellow community members who are here today, who are here today, are compelled to see that all citizens, workers, and visitors of Garrett County are safe, secure, and welcome here. Fourth of July is Thursday, the time of celebration. Amongst the modern festivities, barbecues, and fireworks, it's easy to forget the true spirit of this fundamentally American holiday: freedom. Not freedom for some, but freedom for all.
Amen.
I love our country and community, and in turn, I simply cannot be idle. We have to be confident in spotlighting and addressing our civic shortcomings. My hope is that our collective efforts to safeguard the freedoms of all are not treated as a rote exercise. People of color and LGBTQIA+ folks have always been and will always be a part of Garrett County. They are hardworking, upright citizens who contribute to our county. We all deserve as much support, visibility, and inclusion as anyone else here. So why focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion? Fostering these tenants across all segments of the population may not only make members of rural areas like Harrisville connected to the well-being of the community as a whole, but promotes engagement in constructive debates and heated decisions. It also bolsters local economy, especially one like ours that is a premier vacation destination. Simply from an economical perspective, for instance, it is a no-brainer to bolster inclusivity and diversity in our American county, one which attracts many people from myriad backgrounds who are more likely to help add to the tax base and community's strength if they feel safe and accepted in Garrett County. There's so much division right now in our country, but as I always say, when folks meet eye to eye, they often find out that they have more in common than they have differences. We have to come together, build bridges, and learn from one another. That is how we make America thrive. Not through picking sides, but by coming together as a kind and loving community and seeing that we all have the upper game to bring the dream of our nation of independence to fruition. Thank you for your time and happy Fourth of July to everybody.
Anyone else? Yes?
Jamie Bell with the Maryland Coalition of Immigrants in our election house. You guys created that committee, right? What is the intention to do with that information after you guys created the committee and heard this presentation? What's the goal for you guys to do with that? What's the goal, the long-term goal for that information?
That's a good question. I'm glad you asked it. And I think that the answer is, you know, there were specific recommendations made from the committee, and we have to answer those questions of whether we're going to adopt those recommendations or not. And I don't think we're prepared to do that right this minute. But it, it should be done, it should be timely, and it should be done thoroughly.
Thank you for that. Because I did hear you say that you weren't positioned to do that now, but I wanted to be here that you were that thorough that you were going to, to adopt some of that stuff.
Yes?
Well, if I may, just a follow-up question. Does that include making a commitment to continuing the committee, which doesn't have a financial aspect to it from your part? There are many commissions that you do hold that give advice and feedback to you. So does that include that recommendation as well?
I think that was one of the recommendations that were included, and that would be taken under consideration. It does include, it does include.
You couldn't, you couldn't make that commitment today?
I'm not, I mean, I would certainly entertain a motion to that effect, but I don't think that, I, I don't think that this Board of Commissioners is in a position to do that right now. But I don't think that's something, I, I think the committee with the work that's been done deserves an answer yes or no in a timely manner. That's my personal opinion.
Well, one of the things that came up, the committee's recommendation was that it had to be a different charter. This was a committee that was put together to do the study, the study had been done, so it was a perfect, long opportunity to have better organization.
It's a great point. I, I do think, and I do want to acknowledge that, there was a specific task put forward, and I think that this committee did a very good job of completing that task. And so now the question is, and, and so to that point, and I think it comes back maybe to your question a little bit, I don't know that it's necessarily a re-up of the commission. It would be a, I, I think that's a great point, Chuck. We would have to re-establish it, if that makes sense.
That's a fair point, absolutely. I think I can speak for most people here. If you would like to take a vote in the room right now, we'd be happy to do that.
All, all very good questions and points. And any other questions or comments?
I would, no, I'm, I am, Bill. I was in several of the listening sessions, and our citizens really appreciate being heard. And I would recommend to you that you have a listening session with our marginalized citizens. They want to hear from you. And not only in the targeted groups were people asking that, but also in the general public session. They were saying that the commissioners have a town hall just to listen to us and our concern. And I think they would really appreciate it, because they really appreciated the fact that we were listening to them.
Let's go to Mike in the back, and then we'll come back.
This report is a policy report, which is a little bit different than some of the things people are involved in. I think that the evidence today is that there's a lot of people that are interested in these policy issues and questions. And I think that you're right, it might be presumptuous to say how can you deal with this right now. You said you're going to have discussions about the recommendations and formulate some sort of a response from the commissioners to the reports and address the concerns. What's that process? Do you have that policy, it's a policy discussion. Do you have that at a regular commission meeting where you'll take up one or two of the topics each period? Do you address that in a policy sense in the administrative meeting to the back room, which are also public meetings?
They are open.
Or do you guys go to lunch or go on retreats someplace?
We do not do that, Mike. That'd be a waste.
So what's, what's the process for you guys formulating policy responses to the specific questions that have been put forward in this report?
Well, and it's a good question, too, and I'm not dodging it. Because I, I think, as I sit here just internalizing this myself, my, my thought is, is the proper response a written response that thoroughly covers things? Is it a sit-and-get where we meet directly with the committee and answer that and, and have a back and forth with discussion? Is it, you know, I, I'm just not sure exactly what the most appropriate way that that takes place. I don't know that it's a, and, and I don't know, because I, I just don't. I don't know if that's a discussion of, you know, between the three of us just sitting here talking about it with an audience and making, you know, I, I think there deserves to be some back and forth on that. How that manifests itself, I'm, I'm not, I have to think about it a day or two. I'm not sure what the best way to do that would be.
You have to form a commission position if you're going to sit down and talk to the committee, or, so you put something on the table. So there is a commission, commissioner policy, at least a frame of discussion going forward. It makes sense to get more information, because there's a lot of things in there that have a lot of information that you're not going to go through in the 2,000 or 1,000 replies and stuff. But is that back and forth in a public forum? I guess it would have to be if the commissioners are making policy, it's a policy discussion. It'll be a town hall or a commission meeting?
Yes. I mean, it's going to be something. That, and that's, you're, you're, I don't know what that something looks like. I don't know if it's the right place to do it in a general public meeting that we always have where there's other business, because my guess is, if we're going to talk about that, there'll be a lot of people here specific to that topic. And, you know, so I, I'm sensitive to that as well. So it may not be a general commissioner meeting that has lots of items on the agenda. It might be a special meeting where it's specific to this topic.
Or you guys could even have a public meeting where you're not taking a position, but you're laying out a framework for thinking about the issues and the constraints, like Larry said, you know, you have constraints to some of them, and maybe not.
Exactly. And I think that, to, to that point, I think that would be a different meeting than this meeting. That, that's my point. Yes, Daphne?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I was wondering if there's some way you can keep us informed of the, of the progress that we're making? Because sometimes, you know, if you're sitting at home with the newspaper or whatever, I'd like to know what progress we're making in this area, you know? So that, so that I know somebody's working on it.
I think, again, I think that's a reasonable request of what that looks like we have to talk about, but, I mean, I, that, that's not an unreasonable thing to ask. Yes?
I, I cannot stress enough how we just barely scratched the surface. I mean, we, we just barely got it. As a Latina that has lived in Garrett County for 38 years, we had, I have the most difficult time engaging with other Latinas in Garrett County because of the fear related to admitting that they are here and having someone called a MIGRA, which is the, what is it called in English? Immigration. Having immigration called on them, whether they're here documented or undocumented. There were individuals that I met at Walmart at 10 o'clock in the evening, people of color that said they deliberately don't go to any activities in Garrett County because they are an African-American. One gentleman said he's lived here 32 years, and I have never seen that individual anywhere in the county, anywhere. So for the continuing, the recommendation that you continue this effort, I, I can't stress enough the importance of continuing this effort, because we barely scratched the surface.
I think you wanted to make enough comments.
Look, the only question I had or comment is, can we have some timeframe, you know, for some, some next step? Because, I mean, it can be very nebulous if you say we're going to talk about it and, you know, without any kind of defined, at this time, we'll do X.
Yeah, I think we can do that. The problem right this minute is, we meet away from here, like, our next meeting will be at Pleasant Valley. I don't know if that's, you know, we don't get near the crowds when we leave here, so to make a statement of it, like, and then we're going to Mako, and all, so there's, this time's more difficult than maybe the winter because we're gone and we're off campus some. But yes, I, I do think, I firmly believe that this needs to be timely. Regardless of what the answers are, it should be timely. And, and I think it should be public and that all of you that put time and effort into this should be made aware and be invited or whatever, you know, just be aware of what's going on. Not an unreasonable request.
So to follow up on that a little bit, one of the recommendations that I'm not sure you touched on with Dwayne, the one about communication, one of the things that we found over and over again is that people don't know what's going on. And I'm not sure how to solve that. We, we talked around it a good bit. But, you know, even like with the schools, I don't know that this is happening, you know? Activities, I didn't know you could do, you know, all of it, all of it.
I will say, in every organization that I belong to and every place that I work, that comment is made every single time. And if anybody can figure out the answer to that, you can be a very wealthy person, because I think it's universal.
Well, we can be better at it.
We can always, we absolutely can always be better. We have tried very hard to increase our social media presence, because I know a lot of people consume their news that way. Sarah does a lot of work for us on that. Trevor's around a lot. I know the Republican, it's a weekly, but they, they cover us, I think, pretty well right now. If anybody has any ideas, please let us know. Always open to ideas. I don't think we can communicate enough, and you're right. I mean, there's, there are still people that don't know that Southern middle school and Southern high school are consolidating. We've been talking about it for three years, and that's kind of a big deal. So, like, I get it, and I understand it, and that's of no fault of the superintendent, though. It's just that, you know, how you get your news and what you're paying attention to, we don't have TV, so that's, you know, we don't have a local channel or anything like that, so that's different. I do think the radio tries to do a good job of covering us, but if anyone has ideas, all ears on that. Good, it's good.
What if announcements are also shared via social media, but also at some of like the organization, like the Legion, or, and I know the Lion Club is very active in the community, but what about those voices as a means of communicating to different groups of people? That could be a way to also share if that's not already being done?
Yeah, and I'll have to look into it. I don't, I don't know how we do certain outreach, but that, that makes a lot of sense. All right, any other comments or questions about this?
Can I just say something real quick? And I'm, I'm an outsider, new to Garrett County. And I just want to say, I'm a rag on my commissioners. First of all, I, I'm impressed with their compassion and love for fellow man. Obviously, you all have been facing issues and dealing with issues longer than I have. I've come here and I've, I've tried to figure out why we're 1.5% here, you know, minority in the economic development. I realize that, you know, that we are way off base compared to the rest of the state. I understand, and so I'm trying to figure out what it is. Is it, is it people's attitudes towards minorities or, or other communities? I don't, I don't know if I, if I sense that. As an outsider, I do sense that there is some, you're not from here. And I, I get that a lot, I'm not from here, and, and I get, I feel that prejudice.
I know there are things going to, I think.
So, but I, I do want to say, since I've been here, I've seen nothing but good from, from my commissioners and the hard-hearted people. So I do commend you for that. And I do recommend in a, in a county with, with the political differences that we have here at like 3 to 1, I believe, Republican, Democrat, they are a minority in the state. And, but yet, it's a majority over here in Western Maryland. So they're, they're trying to walk the tightrope to, to, to represent the people that have elected them, the majority. They can't represent every person that is in Garrett County, but they try their best to be sensitive to everybody in this county and try to, try to represent the greater good of the county. I know, I'm a former elected official, I know it's a hard, a hard path to walk, but I do want to give them kudos. I think they do try. So, thank you all.
Thanks, Steve. I'm going to go ahead and transition. I am going to make a slight change, because we're going to do two recognitions for retirement, one for Bob Stevens and one for Jay Moyer. And then we're going to have a little social out in the, in the vestibule after that. So as, I think after we're done with that, people are just going to move outside, which is great. So I want to go ahead and do the announcements first. First of all, I, I need to announce that during the administrative session today, the Board of County Commissioners had to go to closed executive session, as authorized under Article 3-305B4, to consider a matter that concerns a proposal for a business or industrial... 3-305B4 to consider a matter that concerns a proposal for a business or industrial organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state. And I'll just say that was a good meeting, and hopefully there'll be good news to come from that, so we'll, but we did go into executive session to discuss an opportunity that does look promising. Our next scheduled meeting is July 16th at the Pleasant Valley Community Center, beginning at 6 o'clock, as we are now in our tour of the county. We were in Kits Miller last week, so the next meeting will be at Pleasant Valley. The meeting after that will be back here. And does anybody have any questions about anything other than the stuff we just talked about that we took questions on? All right, hearing none. What I'm going to do is, I'm going to start Bob, and I'm going to ask Bob to come up front. And Bob Stevens will be retiring as Garrett County Health Officer. So we do have a commendation and a gift for Bob. And before I give this to Bob, I do have to say, if you've been paying any attention over the last seven years, and it wasn't probably the easiest time to be a health officer, as Bob probably had to deal with the most difficult thing the world's had to deal with in our lifetimes and try to deal with that, and just everything that was there to deal with. So that has to be said before we get into anything. I'm surprised his hair's not gray or falling out like mine, but July 1st, 2024, Board of Garrett County Commissioners' Commendation to Robert T. Stevens for seven years of dedicated service as Garrett County Health Officer. We, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners, wish to express our sincere gratitude to you for your 70 years of dedicated service as the Garrett County Health Officer and a total of 24 years with the Garrett County Health Department. We hereby bestow to you this certificate as a token of appreciation upon your retirement. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence has long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. Signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. And we're going to give you this commendation, but we also have a gift for you from Simon Pierce. I'm going to hand it over and let you open it so I don't drop it, break it.
I might want to have my wife come up and, because she might, because I'll probably drop it.
Go on, Linda.
While I'm opening this, you know, a lot of people talked about during COVID, that all the PPE that we had to buy, and I think the commissioners and the health department, we were almost ready to buy Mylanta by the 55-gallon truck. I mean, it was, there was a lot of, a lot of heartburn there, but I do want to echo what Steve Kelly had said back there earlier, that the, we are an opinionated county, like they are everywhere. Every county's opinionated, right? But one of the things that I do think is that as a group, as a county, we're very civil, and I can say, that's just from my firsthand experience. Because of the support of the commissioners, we had health officers who were fired because their commissioners did not agree with some of the different mandates that were having to be enforced. And I want to say, regardless of what people's opinions were, we followed the law. And, you know, that, there's a lot to be said to that. The other thing is, is that we had counties in this state where I have, where my peers had, the deputy sheriff had to park out in front of their homes. And we're being beat up in social media, and I never had any of that. And I want to thank the entire community, but thank the support of the commissioners. And I will say that during that time, there were many times when Paul would call me on a Saturday, and, you know, I didn't mind him calling me on a Saturday because every day was the same. It was like, what else was I going to do? I couldn't go anywhere, right? And he would call me, and we'd have a discussion, and he would usually say something along the lines of, just tell me what the response is. I don't want, I'm not here to tell you to change anything. Just tell me what the facts are. And I would give him the facts, and then he would take that back to whoever that constituent was and say, this is the reason we're doing what we're doing. So I felt very humbled to be a part of this community. And I guess I, supposed to get this out? Am I supposed to? It looks like.
Your wife said to be careful.
You know what? I, you know, I was here for when Duane Yoder got one of these, and I think it's a, it is a Simon Pierce clock, I think. I think that's what that is? Is that what this is? Okay, so, thank you so much. Now that I don't need to take time.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Duane?
I didn't know you were going to allow comment.
Go ahead.
I can't let Bob get away with it.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, well, I go back further than hell. Bob Raw has a health monitor. When he first came in, he was the director of the Garrett County Office of Children and Families, and then later the Partnership. But that's over, that's about 40 years ago. And the one thing that I said earlier when I worked at Point of Harbor in Maryland is that I felt that Garrett County had, the organization in Garrett County had this culture of collaboration, and part of what Bob just commented on is a result of that. But I don't know the single person in my tenure as Director of Community Analysis that played a more important or had bigger impact on that culture of collaboration than Bob Stevens, both as the director when you were the partnership chairman, director of the Office of Children and Families, and then in your role with the Health Department. And he was in a position where we shared mission in many cases, but I didn't, but he deliberately, and I think by divine intent, made sure that people were feeling comfortable and were working together as organizations in the community. And so, Bob, I just wanted to say thank you for that. That meant a lot to me in my, when I was working. Thank you.
Means a lot coming from you, Duane.
Thank you, Bob, for everything. All right, next up, Jay Moyer. Come on down. So we also have a commendation for Jay. He's been with us for a long time. I do want to just say that on top of working for the Department of Public Works and heading that department for a long time, Jay's been a good mentor, I think, to a lot of the folks that work here and a lot of people that have taken leadership positions here. I know he's part of the administrative leadership team, and his experience and knowledge in all the county operations, not just limited to roads and wastewater, and, you know, water was invaluable to all of us through the last several years. He's been very involved in municipal government with MML, with all kinds of things. So it's a pleasure to bestow this commendation, July 1st, 2024. Garrett County Commissioners' Commendation to Jay Moyer on the occasion of your retirement after 15 years of service as Director of Garrett County Department of Public Works. We, the Board of Garrett County Commissioners and citizens of Garrett County, wish to express our sincerest appreciation to you for your 15 years of loyal and dedicated service as the Director of Garrett County Department of Public Works. Under your direction, knowledge, and experience, your departments throughout the county provided much-needed services to the citizens of Garrett County. We hereby bestow to you, Jay Moyer, this certificate as a token of appreciation and wish you good health and happiness in your retirement, signed by Commissioners Titchnell, Savage, and myself. And let me say thank you very much for everything you've done. I know you're a man of few words. Is there anything you'd like to say?
And I'm not going to try to keep up with Duane, please. I've tried in the past, you can't do it. The only thing I'd like to say is, and I always express this when we do, we do a lot of interviews, or when I was still with the county, and one of the things I always told people who we were interviewing and looked like they would be potential candidates for a job was that you have to look at this as an honor and a privilege to be able to have a position with the Garrett County Government, with all the benefits and the way you're paid and the way you're cared for, and everything that you need to do a job the way it needs to be done is provided. I've worked with some great Board of Commissioners, including this one, and they're very open and receptive to the needs of the employees and the departments, and we always appreciated the help that you've always given us. And it's also been an honor to work with the past County Administrator, Monty Paganhardt, and Mr. Kevin Knoll. We worked very closely for the years that he's been here. He does a great job, and your government in Garrett County is in good hands, and that should be very comforting that you have very capable people running this county. I've participated in a lot of different things over the years, committees, and we've been able to have a say and input in how things go in the county, and I always appreciated my opinions being considered and sometimes utilized. So, again, it's been a privilege. I really appreciated the opportunity that I was given in 2008 to be here, and as I told you guys before, it just seems like it came along 20 years too late. But time marches on, and you just have to move on with your life, and thanks for all you've done for me, and if I can be of any help with anything, we're glad to jump in.
Thank you very much.
And with that, I'm going to a town council.
All right. Thank you. All right, that concludes our meeting. We do have some refreshments in the foyer. Do have a motion to adjourn.